Let the record reflect, the meeting is reconvened with all members present. Rob Cadenello is excused, he is across the pond. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a motion for the executive minutes of September 24th.
Mayor, I move that.
Second. PA system's really working today. They have been discussing executive, roll call vote please.
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Lingz.
Uh.
Mr. Landrigan.
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale.
Yes.
May I have a motion for the regular minutes of September 24th?
I move that.
Second. Council discussion?
The changes are out of place.
We had some changes already submitted.
Yep.
Roll call vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Lingz.
Uh.
Mr. Landrigan.
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale.
Yes.
May I have a motion for the executive minutes of October 10th?
I move that.
Second. Already discussed in executive, roll call vote please.
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Lingz.
Uh.
Mr. Landrigan.
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale.
Yes.
And a motion for the regular minutes of October 10th, 2012.
Move that as amended.
Second. Discussion. Okay, roll call vote please.
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Lingz.
Uh.
Mr. Landrigan.
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale.
Yes.
Welcome. We have a good crowd here today for a special moment coming up shortly. Right now, I want to cover a few things before we come down for some proclamations, but first of all, a happy Hanukkah to our Jewish community out there. Yesterday, we had the lighting of menorah across the street, and I want to thank all those that attended that. And again, since this is the last meeting of the year, Merry Christmas and Happy Holidays to all. This past Saturday, we had a very proud moment. We're getting fairly used to this, three years in a row. You've probably heard the sirens going out of town around 7:30 in the morning and the sirens coming back into town, I think it was about 1:30. But our football team made it three in a row, so congratulations. A round of applause. And hopefully, we will get them here in one of the meetings in the new year to recognize them as they should be multiple times. Couple other announcements. We want to recognize Bob Vogel, I think I just see him walk past the door there. There, perfect timing. And we see this board right over here, it's behind Don for one reason, because of Don's role in that, but also, Bob Vogel was recognized by the State Engineer Association for the Project of the Year as an engineering project completely done in-house. So, Bob, congratulations for your excellent work. And for library news, the abatement project went very well, and they reopened this morning. They were very impressed with all the work done by Jupiter Environmental. The painter will arrive Monday to do some restoration work where the asbestos abatement happened, but we're happy to have everything back and open. So, thank you for your patience as we did the asbestos abatement for the library. We'll be talking a little bit about during our work agenda about the Union Beach, so we'll give you an update on that, but I do want to thank everyone that attended the meeting on Thursday to hear what Madison is doing and how we can help. And over the past few weeks, we've talked about heroes in many different ways, and we have two Madison policemen that were heroes across the border. Off duty, going to a social event in Jersey City when they witnessed a crime happening along the light rail. A gentleman was running away from the station, carrying his briefcase, being chased by several people. Officer Paul Papa Marcos and Luis Goncalves stopped the suspects and held them in place until New Jersey Transit Police appeared on the scene and the Jersey City Police. So their quick action stopped the robbery and maybe even stopped more than that, so we congratulate them for their quick action. And coming closer to home, one of our great hurricane heroes, recognized as our Employee of the Month, Fran Boardman, of Planning and Zoning, and there's a title that doesn't even come in close to what she did during Hurricane Sandy. Dedicated working hours, and you've heard me say it many times, and I will say it many times more, the effort she put in, we almost had to have an executive order to send her home one night because the phone was still ringing and she was not going to leave. We had to pull the plug on the phones, I think, just to get her out of there. But not only answering the phones, but her patience in dealing with some of the calls in the early days of the recovery, when people were really at stress to their max, and how she helped them out. And then taking it a step level, a step higher, when Madison is a very special town because of our train station and our connection with New York, but with gas lines and a rail line that's not working, Fran would not accept that as a possibility for Madison. Worked together, bus rides, so that we could get our New York commuters to work. And so she is well deserved of our Employee of the Month. And I think we should all give her a hand for that. And now I'm going to be coming down below, when ready. Bob McDowell, and anyone else in the audience to hear to accept a proclamation on Human Traffic Awareness Day. Please come forward.
I don't want to wake up either.
Don't be bashful. Human Traffic Awareness Day, January 11th, 2013. Whereas human trafficking involves coercive recruitment, transportation, transfer, harboring, and receipt of persons for purposes of sexual exploitation, forced labor, slavery, or other forms of servitude, and whereas the United Nations has estimated that 12.3 million adults and children are forced into labor, bonded labor, or forced prostitution worldwide, and whereas the U.S. Department of State has estimated annually 14,000 to 17,000 persons are trafficked into the United States, which is the disproportionate number for women and young girls, whereas many of these victims do not speak or understand English or are unable to communicate to seek rescue, and whereas human trafficking is a form of modern day slavery and is second only to drug dealing as growing criminal industry, and whereas New Jersey is a prime location for human trafficking because of major national and international transportation and shipping corridor, and whereas New Jersey State Constitution declares that all persons are nature-free and independent and have certain natural and unalienable rights, and whereas the mission of New Jersey Coalition Against Human Trafficking is to end human trafficking through education, advocacy, and assistance to survivors. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, Mayor of Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby proclaim January 11th, 2013, as Human Trafficking Awareness Day to raise public awareness, promote opposition to human trafficking, and encourage support to the victims of New Jersey and throughout the world. I thank you for your effort for helping spread the word about this terrible challenge we have.
I just want to say, on behalf of the New Jersey Coalition Against Human Trafficking and the League of Women Voters of the Mars Town area, which includes Madison, I would like to thank Mayor and County Council very much for this proclamation.
Well, you know, you are.
I just wanted to thank Bob very much for putting this through. It's very helpful. New Jersey, since it is a very wealthy state, and it is close to the coast, is probably more involved in this kind of thing than where any of us are aware of. So, thank you again, Mayor and Council. Appreciate it.
Do we have Jim Burke in the audience?
Hello, my name's Jim.
How about Darren Moran and Greg Heller of Vision Electric? Are they in the audience?
Angels.
Angels.
And Angelo Iosa? Angelo, there we go. Obviously, we've had an ongoing theme in many of our proclamations, and that is recognizing our hurricane heroes. And we still need to really truly recognize our staff for all they did, but we had many hurricane heroes that stepped up to provide support. So, I won't go through the "whereas"es that will bring back awful memories of Sandy, because we know the impact it had in Madison, but I do want to recognize that, I'll start midway through here, I'll start with the Vision Electric. Whereas Borough employees were supported in the restoration work by Darren Moran and Greg Heller of Vision Electric, who from the second day after the storm assisted in disassembling and down the down wires and poles from damaged and de-energized areas of the town, thereby allowing public works to begin clearing down trees. And whereas these employees of Vision Electric also performed visual inspections of certain areas and secured down residential service wires to expedite the re-energizing of the borough's electric circuits. And whereas, for the next week, George Bellin, Bruno Fiero, Greg Heller, and Darren Moran of Vision Electric assisted the borough by working to reattach, re-energize approximately seven residential services, and whereas Angelo Iosa, the owner of Vision Electric, and his daughter Catherine volunteered their assistance by proceeding the crews to determine if work could be performed by employees of Vision Electric or if Madison Electric utility was required. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby extend thanks and appreciation to employees of Vision Electric for their hard work and dedicated efforts in restoring power to the residents of the And recognition of Jim Burke. Whereas the Borough employees were supported in the restoration work by Jim Burke of Burke Electric, who from the second day after the storm assisted in disassembling and down the down wires and poles from damaged and de-energized areas of the town, allowing DPW to begin clearing down trees. And whereas Jim Burke also performed visual inspections of certain areas and secured down residential service wires to expedite the re-energizing of the borough's electric circuits. And whereas the next week, Jim Burke assisted the borough by working to reattach and re-energize approximately 70 residential services. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the Mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, here, Robert, hereby extend thanks and appreciation to Jim Burke for his hard work and dedicated efforts in restoring power to the residents of the Borough of Madison. And this has become a great story, whether it's eyewitness news or NPR, the success that Madison has provided, as you see Mike Piana right here, this was truly a team effort, and a proud time for Madison. So I thank everyone that made this happen so quickly. Tsukamoto.
Yes, thank you. First, the report.
Yeah, Mayor, do you want to?
We'll hold. Thank you all for joining us in recognizing Don's contributions to the borough. Thank you so much for coming. Okay. Public Safety, Mr. Tsukamoto.
Yeah, thank you. First, the report from the Police Department. The Police Department, in the month of November, answered over 2,200 calls for service. The officers responded to and investigated 48 motor vehicle crashes, 18 suspicious incidents, 14 suspicious motor vehicles, 11 suspicious persons, four thefts, larcenies, three burglaries, three assaults, nine domestic violence calls. The department also issued 178 summonses and made 13 arrests, including five narcotics, two warrants, two domestic violence, two burglary, two assault, and one trespassing arrest. Madison officers responded to 143 alarm activations and conducted 482 various premise and welfare checks. So far this year, the department answered over 25,000 calls for service, responded to and investigated over 400 motor vehicle crashes, made 215 arrests, including 20 DWIs, and responded to over 900 medical emergencies. In November, the Madison PBA collected almost 1,000 pounds of food for the Interfaith Food Pantry of Morris County. The Madison Police Department is again holding its annual Toys for Tots toy drive. Please consider dropping off your donations in the lobby of the police headquarters. Report from the Fire Department. The Fire Department would like to thank our neighboring communities for their help and assistance with recent fires, as well as pointing out that we have given aids to our neighbors as well. In the Park Avenue fire event in November, we received mutual aid assistance from Florham Park, Chatham Borough, Morris Township, Cedar Nose, Morris Town, Chatham Township, Green Village, East Hanover, New Vernon, Morris Plains, and also Morris County Fire Coordinator. We received mutual aid and assistance for the Hunter Drive fire in November as well from Florham Park, Chatham Borough, Morris Township, Cedar Nose, Green Village, New Vernon, and also Morris County Fire Coordinators. We have also given mutual aid assistance over the same period to the following fire departments. Florham Park for a structure fire, Florham Park again in December for office fire, Morris Town Airport for a small fire, Morris Town, and two incidents in Morris Town, one structure fire, one house fire. Thank you.
Do you want to cover, anything for finance and Borough Clerk while you're in Rob's absence, or?
I have no report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Utilities, Dr. Esposito.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On December 6th, Madison hosted the annual meeting of the Public Power Association here at Borough Hall. The Public Power Association of New Jersey is a prestigious organization that represents the 10 towns who operate their municipal electric utilities. And it takes me great pleasure to mention Jim Burnett was unanimously elected as President of the Public Power Association. So, congratulations to Jim. And job well done. The Electric Department has been continually repairing the storm-related damage throughout town. I will give my continued special thanks to the Electrical Department, as well as the DPW for their tireless efforts in restoring and maintaining our infrastructure after Sandy. The Electrical Department wanted to maintain normally in town, so they took some time away and to put up our annual Christmas tree. So thank you to all the gentlemen on our electric, as well as our DPW. Waverly and Lincoln Place has been recently designated as a great place in New Jersey by the American Planning Association of New Jersey, which is a great accomplishment for that section of town. The American Planning Association is now submitting an application to have Waverly and Lincoln Place designated as a great place in America. So, that's, it's a great accomplishment between our designing and our utilities of those two areas in town. And my last thing is that, I just send my congratulations to the Madison Dodger High School Varsity Football Team. Being a Dodger myself, it's great pride, and seeing them go three years in a row with three championships, and it reminds me of the days, early days of Coach Monica back in the mid to late 60s, where there went to four years of championships. So, congratulations to them. Thank you, Mayor.
If I remember, we had the Score for Four, Strive for Five, and the Blitz for Six t-shirts back then, so maybe, maybe again. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Lingz.
The Department of Public Works reports that they are on their last round for relief to come in during the middle of removing 45 stumps and grinding 10 more stumps following The Engineering Land Use Services Department Capital Project Status Report is as follows. The Sampson Avenue Improvement Project construction target is early spring 2013. The Rose Day Avenue Improvements appropriations must be completed prior to bid, and the target for bidding is mid-January 2013. We anticipate bidding the Green Avenue Reconstruction Project by April 2013. Other than the final paving, PSENG has completed work on the Main Street Gas Main Project. A community meeting was held with PSENG on November 28th to discuss concerns with the Rosewood Crestwood and Lenwick Gas Maines. They agreed to replace the existing gas main, and the project is currently in progress. The Madison Recreation Complex was awarded the Municipal Construction Project of the Year by the New Jersey Society of Municipal last week, and the Borough Engineer, Staff, and former Mayor Holden were in attendance to receive the award. The Madison Recreation Complex has undergone a surveyed stakeout of proposed fence lines for compliance within JDP requirements pursuant to recommendations by PK Environmental Consultants. A completed recreation in open space inventory was completed by staff and sent to Green Acres Program with state payment vouchers to advance state reimbursement of committed funding. The Tredwell Pump Station revision specifications and the specifications and applications for the permanent stabilization of the channel in Belloitz Park will be completed by the end of the year. Please refer to the municipal website for general announcements about current construction projects, and the engineering website for additional details about our projects. The Department of Land Use Services wishes the public a safe, secure, and happy holiday season.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Hurricane Sandy's still in the news, and everybody, there was a good turnout last week for Union Beach. The Senior Advisory Committee is continuing to address Union Beach, and they have what they call the Knitters and Crocheters Club, and what they've done is, a number of organizations have joined with them to actually put together some winter clothing. These people lost everything, and they need warm clothing. Some of the organizations that have worked with them are the Thursday Morning Club, Shabbat of Southeast Morris County, St. Vincent's Church, and the Madison Public Library. Now they're going to continue this effort. There's a lot of people down there that need more, and they're going to be using the Blue Pearls email list, so be on the lookout for that, all right? Okay, from the DDC, they're asking that people, please remember to shop Madison during the holidays. You can purchase a $50 gift card at Kramer's Carpets for $45. Every gift certificate you purchase, the DDC will donate $2 toward Union Beach hurricane relief. They also want to announce that the Price Patrol is back. They say, they tell you to wear your Shop Madison buttons. If you're spotted in town with the button and a shopping bag, you could be the shopper of the day and win a gift certificate. And then finally, what you're going to notice is some people, some Borough employees doing some digging around downtown. They're going to be putting up some test poles for an artist's exhibit. These poles will be, I guess, you know, anywhere from, Jim, I would just say about eight to 10 feet tall, and on the top of them, artists are going to put paintings. They'll be winter, they'll be weatherproof, and they'll be on display at the borough. They're going to be putting up some test poles, and that should all, if all goes well, that should happen this spring and summer. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Health and Public Assistance, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, there's a lot going on down at the Health Department, and one of the great accomplishments is that all the 2013 cat and dog license applications are now on the Health Department website. You just have to go to forms and applications. You can download the form, fill it out right on the computer, and then print it and mail it to the Health Department. There's also a new page on the Health Department website that's specifically designed for retail food establishments. On there, you can also download the 2013 application, as well as the information for a new food handler's course that is being offered, and the 2014 Food Safety Award of Excellence program. The Food Safety Award of Excellence is for 2014 because they have to fulfill the requirements in 2013 to be eligible. There's a certain amount of hours and classes that the establishments have to go to. At this time, we're not equipped to take the payments online, but I'm looking at Jim Sanderson, and I just know that he'll get that done later on in 2013. He's very good at doing stuff like that. So, also, Lisa Gola wanted me to mention what the Madison Health Department is doing, assisting with the Union Beach project. The department is donating over 100 masks for volunteers and staff to use when they're down at Union Beach to work on the cleanup, especially on, if it's, if you're working on, I guess, some of the 40 houses that have debris and whatever. The department has also arranged with Walgreens Pharmacy and CVS Minute Clinic in Chatham to provide DTAP vaccine, which will assist in protecting volunteers from tetanus should they be exposed. Anyone who goes to get the vaccine should bring their insurance card. However, anyone who does not have insurance should contact the Health Department to make arrangements to receive the vaccine. We have a certain amount of the vaccine, and we're willing to help the volunteers. This is just another good thing that Madison Departments do. So, if you feel that you need, if you need to go down to Union Beach and you want to get this vaccine, please call the Health Department. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Communications and Petitions.
Yes, Mayor, three have been received. An email received November 27th from Rob Bazarel of Glenwild Circle regarding a community theater. Another email received December 5th from Sean Murphy of Glenwood Avenue regarding debris collection, and an email received December 5th from David Williams of Highland Avenue regarding the Union Beach relief efforts.
Thank you. All right, this is the first of two invitations for discussion. This is an opportunity for the public to comment or ask questions on any items on the agenda discussions or resolutions only. Any ordinances that are listed, we will have a hearing for today. So the agenda discussions include a lot of cancellations, because this is the year-end. So we have cancellations on completed capital improvement, outstanding checks in bank accounts. errors, grant appropriation reserve balances, can't also, uh, our 2012 corrective action plan, 2012 budget transfers, cancellation of accounts receivable, account for the, uh, Water Utility Operating Fund, and then we will have the, um, Borough of Madison-Union Beach Partnership Update. With those guidelines, is there anyone wishing to comment? If so, please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, and please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to comment?
Richard Zipper, Glenwood Avenue. Uh, they've mentioned in the paper that they were approving Rosedale Avenue, and, um, just wondering if part of the plan was to improve the side lines at the Fairview-Rosedale-Glenwood intersection. Uh, when the state built that bridge in nineteen eighty-nine, they, um, they failed to, uh, make a, a good sight line. There was numerous accidents there in the beginning, uh, and I still know people who avoid that intersection. They drive around a lot so they don't go through here. Is there any plans for that?
Bob, can you, uh, address, I know we were talking about striping, uh, and to create a better, uh, lanes and all that.
Sure, again, there.
Step on up to this, we want to catch every word on our video here. Thank you.
So, um, with our project for resurfacing Rosedale Avenue, obviously, we have traffic calming and, uh, and, uh, line striping and signage and, uh, improvements having to do with that intersection, because it's the term of the job. Now, uh, we have gone through Complete Streets Committee meetings on this and, uh, also identified signal movements that have to be made because the blinkers aren't, uh, operating quite up to the standard that they need to be at, and so we're going to move forward with that. Uh, and, uh, Sukamoto will also verify for you that through Complete Streets, we're not just doing one side of the intersection in terms of the striping and signage, we're going to do all four sides of the intersection in terms of striping and signage, which will include some traffic calming, a mid-block crosswalk, improved crosswalk delineators, and a number of improvements at that intersection. Sight distance is a particularly difficult problem to deal with, um, and I think closing down the intersection with signage and striping is the most cost-effective first step that we have, Mayor, in order to improve that intersection. Uh, just from Mr. Zipper's, uh, information, it is part of the project, and so it will be accomplished as the, as the, uh, project was focused.
So, just to clarify, squeezing down the intersection is, uh, he said, closing down, which, I, that's, yeah, it's same sort, so you squeeze it, so.
Yeah, squeezing down the intersection with signage and striping, not with hard structural improvements like the curving, um, will actually improve the sight distance. But there are some hard corners there to have to deal with, with the bridge abutments and the fencing, um, and other installed improvements that the DOT had put in, uh, when the bridge was created, that are somewhat difficult to deal with. And so, uh, we're trying to take this first step in terms of the, the most cost-effective way to, to make this intersection safer, and I think, again, the mid-block crosswalks and blue crosswalks, uh, and traffic calming devices that we're installing at that location should, uh, really improve the situation for residents.
And an example of the value of squeezing down with just striping alone is if you go to, uh, Central and Ridgedale, just that little bit of strip, striping has, you know, keeps cars towards the middle where they get a better view, and that has, uh, greatly improved the site there. So, thank you. Anyone, anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the agenda or the meeting and move on to agenda discussions. Robert, starting with cancellation of completed capital improvement ordinances, and we'll just move right on through each of these.
I'd like to cancel twenty ordinances. Bulk is in the, uh, general capital. That's fifty-two thousand, fifty-nine thousand in order, capital and twenty-seven hundred in order.
Okay, any questions? Alright, yes, Jean?
Yeah, um, no question regarding the ones that you have listed there. My question is regarding how many ordinances do we still have open and, um, the amount unencumbered and the amount unspent? You, you don't, Robert, you really don't have to go through that right now. It would be nice just to give us a report so we'll have some idea as to what, um, the, a list of ordinance, uh, still open, and also the reasons as to why they're still open.
I would be there.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anything else? Alright, um, moving on to checks and bank errors. Think that's pretty straightforward.
This is, uh, you see this episode here? I just, uh, want to clear up for the order. I don't want to, uh, report them on our balance sheet, or I don't want to report the, uh, carry the outstanding checks that are, have not been cashed, so, uh, well, I seek approval on canceling these items.
Robert, I believe you made efforts to contact, um, these individuals, right? Because there's some couple of tax refunds, and one of them is a pretty large amount.
Yes.
And they, you weren't able to, I know that you were contacting them.
Yeah, as I, you and I discussed earlier, so people move, um, and gets misplaced.
Did you reach the M. Holden?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Alright.
For eleven dollars.
Alright, thanks, just making sure. Alright. Moving on to, uh, cancellation of grant appropria- appropriation reserve balances. Easy for me to say.
The, uh, our order was, uh, had a recommendation in two thousand, two thousand and nine report, uh, has a, uh, recommendation to investigate the older rent reserves, make a determination as a continued recommendation for proper disposition, and I want to, uh, continue to do it, and that's what I'm doing here. I've canceled, uh, hang grants, uh, in the current year, I did not cancel, I did not cancel the prior year. In this case, I'm canceling two thousand and ten, two thousand and nine, two thousand and eight.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, Robert, I just have a, a question about this. Uh, just looking at Clean Communities Program, there's fourteen thousand dollars in it in recycling tonnage. I understand the recycling's thirty-four thousand, that's what we get, and it goes back into, um, you know, our, our surplus or our funds or whatever. Um, and I understand your reasoning for, uh, canceling these, obviously. It's, uh, it's important to do, but I also think that moving forward, when we see, uh, you know, a particular department like Clean Communities, which is, uh, DPW, having fourteen thousand, it seems to me that we have a lot of projects in this town that fourteen thousand dollars would be able to be helped. So, I think that early on, we have to kind of change our concept. Um, I mean, this is, this is money that's given to us. I think that we should be encouraging those departments to look for the projects, take care of what needs to, um, uh, be done, and, uh, utilize, uh, the money, so somehow we have to think about how we're gonna do that. Had a brief conversation with, uh, Jim Burnett today about, um, but, uh, that's ninety-two thousand dollars that, you know, probably could have gone into some really good projects in Madison. So, I, what I'd like to say is, like, going forward after this, you know, is just keep a better account of what's going on, and get back to those departments to see if we can, uh, you know, utilize all that money on projects. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, 2012 corrective action plan.
There were seven, uh, recommendations. Uh, one is a continuation from the last three years. We're gonna continue to see that. Um, I've discussed this on several occasions with Mr. Cody, Mr. Burnett, and the Department of Health. Um, you put the, uh, corrective action in place? Any questions?
Any questions on any of the, Jean?
Um, number three?
Yes.
Um, this seems like it's a procedural, um, issue that we need to fix. Um, the corrective action, it's great to have the, um, to have you, um, delete the asset once they're auctioned off, but I think something need to be added because you are not the one actually does all the work. If I remember correctly, it's the purchasing officer that will auction these items off, right?
Yes.
So, a step need to be added for the, um, purchasing officer to really notify the chief financial officer, so the chief financial officer can take the next step to, to write that off. So.
I'm actually aware of when, when it happens, I just forgot.
Okay.
I know a lot.
So, you always know when that happens, right? Okay, so we, okay.
The, the Steve Martin, uh, CFO, I forgot, sorry.
No, I'll.
Alright, so, so that's not an issue that you are not informed?
Well, an auction takes place, it's advertised.
So, alright, so we'll, we'll make sure we close that loop. Thank you. Alright, anything else on, uh, corrective action plan? 2012 budget transfers?
There's just two. Um, the reason there's just two is, is I, I took, for, for the storm, I, I, I did transfers in electric utility. I accumulated all of the spending that was being taking place, uh, on cleanups, uh, the repairs. Uh, these two items on budget transfers are not related to the storm whatsoever. Additional fifty thousand dollars in non-storm related overtime from the police department. Uh, I needed to make that transfer, and then, uh, I believe the council is very familiar with legal expenses in the Health Department. I've requested to make that transfer. Those are the two that I'm, uh, believe are necessary.
So, let me make sure that I under- understand regarding the police department. The police department overtime needs fifty thousand dollars, right? So, you, you bring in twenty from insurance.
Yes.
Instead of bringing in thirty from the police department that you have on the second line?
No, the, the, the fifty thousand is funded by the.
Thirty from police, and then.
Thirty from police, other expenses.
Right, so instead of moving the thirty to the overtime from the police expense to police overtime.
That's correct.
So, you did kind of a three-way thing. So, um, so in actuality, the police department was short twenty and not fifty.
Well, we're short fifty, short twenty overall, yes.
Right. Just want, just want to make that point, that they're not, uh, short fifty, they're only short twenty.
Correct.
You were doing a three-way transfer.
One way, that's extra.
Thank you.
Okay, anything? Alright, and cancellation of accounts receivable for Water Utility Operating Fund.
This is a very unstable balance, uh, on the record. Order brought it up by me to respond to, yes, let's write it up. We can't trace it back to an, an address, we can't trace it back to the account. And I don't know off the balance sheet.
Sixteen hundred, okay. Any questions? Alright, so for all of these, we have resolutions under the consent agenda. Alright, thank you, Robert. Borough of Madison, Borough of Union Beach Partnership Update. I just want to, uh, start off by thanking everyone again who attended the meeting here last Thursday. Another example of what a great town we live in and how towns partnering can really help out and make a difference. Um, and I, what we heard that, in that meeting, were the reasons for why we're partnering with the Union Beach, and I won't go into all the details, but if you go to the, our Rosenet website, you'll see the Union Beach homepage there, or the landing page for Union Beach, and there's also a link to the video, so you can see the whole meeting. Um, but one of the things I'm gonna ask, uh, Bob Landrigan to, uh, give us some update of, of things that are going down there, going on down there, but one in particular is how this partnership is different than doing a collection and sending money, which is also very much needed, but the story of what happened this past weekend with sending inspectors and electricians down there and how homes are now powered up. So, Bob, if you can touch on that story and some other things on the update of how we're doing down there with the partnership.
Sure. Um, first of all, Mayor, that, that, that was great, great introduction to it, because what happened at that meeting with all the people that showed up was very impressive. Um, the people down there will need things for their homes. That's, that's down the road. Right now, they need their homes, period. Uh, you know, you'll see different stories about, you know, the condition of the town and whatnot, but these people need a place to live. Now, when the water came through, and a lot of these homes were affected by anywhere from two to eight feet of water, uh, their electrical systems were damaged. Uh, what the borough did, and they were very much appreciated, I'll give you a little side story afterwards, is before you can restore electric to a house that's been affected by water, it has to be inspected, because if you turn on the electric, this even happened in Madison during the hurricane. The house has to be sound to accept the electric. Um, we sent down, uh, some of our own borough employees and an electrician who was here before, and he went into some of the homes, and they did an inspection, and they said, you know what? This house doesn't pass the inspection, so the homeowner was upset. I said, wait a minute, we have somebody here who can fix it. They fixed it, they went outside, they were in a Borough of Madison truck, they were applauded, and then people said, could you come to the next house, and to the next house? The goal is to get as many people back into their homes as quickly as possible, so that takes the burden off of the borough to provide housing and shelter for them. That's the key. In line with that, uh, we have to make sure that, we have to give the homeowners the ability to make sure that their home is safe from mold, and that's another, uh, challenge, and we're gonna work with them on that. And I know that there are some private donors and organizations who at this time wish to remain anonymous, that are working to get healthcare set up down there. Uh, we're looking to rebuild the town to give these people good, safe homes to live in. Uh, this is gonna be a long, arduous process. Um, I know that some other individuals who probably wish to remain anonymous at this point are also working to get some of their, uh, police cars back. They lost all their police cars, their ambulances, their fire trucks. The town needs to be rebuilt, and, uh, we're working toward that right now.
Thank you, Bob. Ray, Jim, anything else to add, or council members? Alright, again, I want to thank everyone, the churches, school groups, individuals, our council members that have agreed to make this partnership possible, and another great little story that's coming up is, the junior school is making a trip down there either Thursday or Friday this week, all volunteering to help clean up, and, yes, they might be missing a day of classes, but I think as far as an educational experience and teaching volunteerism and how you can help others, that day for the junior school and for Union Beach will be invaluable, so I thank them for, for taking that leadership on that. Okay, ordinances for hearing.
Okay, the ordinance is scheduled for hearing, introduced by title, and passed on first reading at a regular meeting of the council held on November twenty-sixth, two thousand and twelve. They were all posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the members of the general public requesting copies.
I call ordinances for second hearing and ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance thirty-eight, two thousand and twelve, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating four hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for Road Improvements on Rosedale Avenue.
I open the hearing for ordinance thirty-eight, two thousand and twelve. Anyone wishing to be heard on this ordinance, please step forward. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-eight dash two thousand and twelve.
Second up?
Council discussion. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Uh.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I declare ordinance thirty-eight dash two thousand and twelve adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance thirty-nine, two thousand and twelve, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating forty-six thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for two HVAC units for the Madison Public Library.
I open the hearing for ordinance thirty-nine dash two thousand and twelve. Anyone wishing to be heard on this, please step to lectern. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move, uh, ordinance thirty-nine dash two thousand and twelve.
Second?
Discussion. Roll call vote.
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Uh.
Mr. Cat, uh, Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I declare ordinance thirty-nine dash two thousand and twelve adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance forty, two thousand and twelve, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating Ordinance 40, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $70,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for the purchase of a utility truck and accessories.
I open the hearing for ordinance 40-2012. Anyone wishing to speak, please step to the lectern. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 40-2012.
Second act.
Discussion, roll call, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Uh...
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 40-2012 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we come to the second round of invitation for discussion, and this is the round when you can speak on anything. And please, rules please are still in effect, which means step up, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to comment on anything, please step forward. Sam?
Sam? Sam from Martha, Rosedale Avenue. Happy holidays, everyone, Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Sam.
Every once in a while, we get a person that steps up to the plate, a relatively unknown person, who wants to make an impact. This person was Don Links. We had a person that was relatively unknown, took a step into the political arena, got elected, and he followed all his convictions that he had, and he got elected. He was a person of word, he was a person of unblemished character, he was fair to all, I totally agree. And the things that he put his name to, he succeeded. And all these things, including the friendships that were brought out by this, will continue for a long, long time. Don, thank you very much for being a friend, and thank you very much for all your service at the Town of Madison, with the Recreation Department, all the different things that you accomplished, and you stuck with it from beginning and so forth, thank you.
Well said, Sam, thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
My name is Dr. Tom Mascula, I live in the Etean Valley Road. I am thinking ahead to the formation of the board next year, and we, one of the things we celebrated this year was the working arrangement between the municipality and the school district on the Green Village Road project. And we look forward to carrying that forward as a community with the benefit of the leadership that we so much appreciate. It offers us, I think, a wonderful opportunity to reinvigorate the working relationship on an ongoing and permanent basis between the borough and the district. And I think everyone wants that, and is committed to that, and we have our shared services efforts. And so, we have in place a great foundation to build on. And I felt that the podium to offer one more step that might be helpful. In the new board council arrangement, we are going to have a new liaison to the school district. I don't know if that's a sought-after assignment among the six, or if that will definitely go to the most junior person, but in any event, I offered the idea of encouraging that individual who gets that assignment to attend the school board meetings. The school board meetings are not particularly thrilling, they're meaningful, but perhaps not entertaining. So, and the six of you will be very busy, so whoever has that assignment to take on a meeting every two weeks, evening is probably not something that you do automatically, but it presents an image, in addition to any quality communication that may occur in that interaction, just the form of having the council liaison at the school district meeting, I think, encourages the public to understand the working relationship between the two, to perhaps be more excited about their, both the town and the district, and to bounce ideas off of district people, district leaders, and at least one council person at the same time. So, I have come to encourage whoever takes on that liaison role to regularly, if possible, attend those meetings.
Thank you, Tom, and I think that'll be very good. I think the importance, through the Green Village Road School redevelopment, we've obviously been working very closely together, we've had the Shared Services Committee for several years, we kind of took a little break for that as we worked on the Green Village Road School project, we will get that, the Shared Services Committee will certainly be reappointed and moved forward, and I think it's good advice for whoever steps forward for the liaison position to, you know, maybe every meeting is a challenge, but at least make it there on a regular basis, so thank you for those suggestions. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
I have a quick minute, sir.
Yeah, we'll get Carmen Pico first.
Carmen Pico, 58, Martha Street. I'd like to say to Don, thank you for all the advice that you've given me, I've only known you for two years, but something sticks in my mind when I was on fire in the game, down at Rosedale, when you were at the game, and I asked him, "How did I do it?" At the end of the game. He said, "There's nothing else, you were consistent." So, that doesn't really, that's really telling, like, "That's a bad job." And that's what I liked about Don. Don was straightforward, he doesn't go around the boy's, he goes and tells you like it is. And I've been coming to just about every council meeting, and the other thing I liked about Don is that when things started to get out of hand, he sort of took control, and he said what he had to say, whether the rest of the people liked it or not. To me, that is the good councilperson. I've seen a lot of councilpeople come and go, and I know that Don has to be up there as one of the best. And I just want to say, Don, thank you very much for everything that you've done for me, and everything that you've done for the way the town is now.
Thank you, well said, thank you.
My name's Ken Sullivan, I live at the 10th Independent Court. Throw a few things down, I actually thought that this might go under Own and Fenchish business, since I think there are a couple of things that are Own and Fenchish that need to be addressed. Over the summer, the reconstruction of Woodland Road was completed, but not quite incomprehensibly. The road pavement ended at Arnsville Road, which is 900 feet or so shy of the Chatham border, we left with a deteriorating road bed on the approach to the heavily trafficked Union Hill Road overpass. Mr. Vogels explained to me that the borough chose not to act on the bid submitted last year, and any money to continue the project would need to be allocated by the council in this coming year. I see on the agenda that the road construction focus is shifting to the road stand next year, and that there was no mention of completing the Woodland Project. Woodland Road, except for that unfinished section, now has bike path delineations and also retains its role as an important thoroughfare. The deterioration poses significant risk to those bikers, runners, and motorists who must currently gear out to the road to avoid injury or equipment damage. The beauty of the new Woodland Road is marred by its own clear portion, and I urge the council to include the funds in your resurfacing plan this year and to finish that job. And while on the subject of paving Division Road between Main Street and Kings Road is in similar disrepair, I understand this road is shared by Madison and Chatham, and although an arrangement between the two towns was made to repair Brooklyn, Division remains narrow, crumbling, and bordering undangerous. And I urge the council again to make sure to include the funding for the repairing of Division Avenue in the year plan and finish that job. During the hurricane and its aftereffects, Madison took charge of nearly overwhelming challenges and turned in just a top-flight effort. I'm sure that many storm-pelts and worms will identify Madison as defiance to many of these efforts, from the hard-working utility hotline team, to the critically important NEXO alerts, to the friends at MVAC helping people recharge their batteries, and particularly the extraordinary effort to restore Madison's power sooner than any other area which was impacted as severely. While the efforts to clean up and repair continue, I feel their recent about-face concerning ranch and yard waste pickup has the potential to leave a bad taste in the mouths of residents. The town did pick up branches and tree parts of many, many night-hauls while the power was out, and until recently, has not picked up anything in my area since power was restored. My street is now clear of leaves, but any tree branches, including those even cut to size for yard waste inclusion, and on the street since November 10th, have been left uncollected by leaf crews and are ignored weekly by the yard waste crews. And I am told I need to take that with the council. So, whatever the reasoning, your decision amounts to a mid-recovery reversal of what was a policy, whether it was written or unwritten, and that now requires residents to pretty much manicure their yard waste in the month of December before you take it away. I find, I find to tell the residents, you will not be collecting the refuse of a new storm unless it is given back, is somewhat disingenuous when you decide this nearly a month after they've put that out on the street, and in a form which you have collected in the aftermath of three distinct severe storms, August, Irene, the October storm, and then Sandy, the first few days of Sandy. So, I certainly don't want this situation to mar my impressions of the borough's response to Sandy. I think it was extraordinary and the most representative. My request is simple, I think that the council should approve one final round of tree branch pickups, consistent with the efforts that were made right after all the storms of the last two years. This will be a strong final effort for you to put the damage of Sandy behind us, and leave us all in the mood to continue to speak highly of your work to finish that job.
Thank you, Ken. And anyone else wishing to be heard, and then, Bob, when you come up, if you can talk about the woodland, and seeing, no one will, Bob, we'll give you the, and we'll put the concerns about the pickup, we will pass that on and see what we can do. It is the, to point out before, the first few rounds of pickup, because it was part of the relief or the cleanup effort, we get some level of FEMA reimbursement at this point, that will not happen, and so it's a matter of the manpower, we no longer have the crews in town that we were able to bring in to help clean up, so it's, we're down to just, right back to our regular manpower, so it is a challenge. Just as a reminder, I heard you speak of the challenge with getting things ready for yard waste, but just a reminder, the residents, in order to take advantage of yard waste pickup, that will continue for a few more weeks, besides the right size, it has to be bundled or put in barrels, so obviously, that's step one to help with the cleanup. Okay, Bob?
Mayor, just for permission, Mr. Sullivan did contact me last week about debris and branches and things like that, and some property that had been picked up. Mr. made us know about it, he also mentioned his concern about the balance of Woodland Road project that remains to be done, and I let him know, as I let you know as well, that we got two prices for that last year, one from the county cooperative bid process, and one from the general contractor that is working on Woodland Road at Sampson Avenue to complete a mill and overlay of the Woodland Road project running east. The difficulty that we had at the time was that the contractor's proposal, which was relatively competitive, was a contract that we were having a great deal of problems with getting the project at Sampson Avenue completed. And so, rather than give him additional work to complete as potentially an excuse not to complete, the Sampson Avenue section of Woodland Road, we decided to take a buy on those prices and move it into this year. I think that mill and overlay project, as I recall, the price was in and around between $70,000 and $80,000, so it's not a really significant project for the Borough of Madison in terms of roadway resurfacing, and if we can get that as part of the capital budget this year, I think it makes sense to do as well as Division Avenue. And Division Avenue is a different situation, where we've had involvement from Chatham. Chatham was concerned that the public service reliability project had a lot of very large towers and foundations going in the ground, and they didn't want a brand-new road being run over by heavy equipment for a period of time, and so we also put that off a little bit, but we still have an agreement with Chatham Downey to participate in the completion of the mill and overlay project at Division Avenue as well. So, both of those projects can move forward very easily, in my opinion, in 2013, as long as the budget doesn't pull too tight.
So, but the key takeaway, they are on the road project list, and they will...
They haven't gone away.
They will not go away. Okay, thank you for helping out on that.
And so, one other thing that didn't get mentioned earlier in your comments, Mayor, was that New Jersey Transit has occupied Elm Street.
Yes.
And so, that's up, there's an announcement just to the general public that Elm Street is now closed at the news location so that New Jersey Transit can go in and make long, long-winded improvements to the Elm Street Bridge, which that overpass has been degraded for as, as long as I can make reference to it, which is over 10 years at this stage of the game. And we've been on, and in contact with them for that whole period of time, in fact, asking them for those improvements to be made, so it's very nice to get New Jersey Transit to get the project and contract in line, and have a contractor out there, and so nice and responsive contractor, the same one that's working on Kings Road right now. So, he'll complete that bridge in the next 90 days, and Elm Street Bridge will be closed for that period of time during the winter, and so we're really kind of looking forward to having New Jersey Transit get that part done. I think it'll be a big improvement in both areas, I said that both Kings Road and Elm Street, so. And then the last item is, many of the people that have come up have touched upon characteristics of councilman links, and I will say that as my liaison for the past two years, that Don has had incredible consistency and a really unwavering commitment to capital projects getting completed. And, you know, the funny thing about capital construction projects is you don't pick up a phone and order something, and that's the end of it. It's something that requires a lot of follow-through. And God bless him, Don has had a tremendous amount of follow-through on capital projects here in Borough of Madison, and he, I mentioned him personally at the awards hearing for the Madison Recreation Center, and yes, it's a little bit late in coming, I think we probably should have got the award in spring instead of the fall this year, Don, but you know how I feel about you. And in my opinion, the award is all yours, and it wasn't earned by the staff, it was earned by councilman links, and I certainly appreciate his dedication, his follow-through, his consistency during the past two years, working with lady services and the rest of the staff, so, thanks.
Thank you, Bob, for taking the time to say that. And I just want to make one additional comment about Elm Street. If Sam was here, Sam Sorsel was here, might have remembered to say something about it since he wasn't, but the other thing is, when a road gets closed like Elm Street, any businesses on there really can lose a lot of their regular traffic. So, I just encourage any Madison residents that need to run out for a little convenience item, a loaf of bread or something, think about Madison Convenience and Elm Street, he now has lost his through traffic of people stopping there, so if you're going to, you know, buy that winning lottery ticket or something, stop by there once in a while, make sure...
his dedication, his follow-through, his consistency during the past two years, working with lady services and the rest of the staff, so thanks to you.
Thank you, Bob, for taking the time to say that. And I just want to make one additional comment about Elm Street. If Sam was here, if Sam Sorsel was here, I might have remembered to say something about it, since he wasn't here, but the, the other thing is, when a road gets closed like Elm Street, any businesses on there really can lose a lot of their regular traffic. So I just encourage any Madison residents that need to run out for a little convenience item, a loaf of bread or something, think about Madison Convenience on Elm Street. He now has lost his through-traffic of people stopping there, so if you're going to, you know, buy that winning lottery ticket or something, stop by there once in a while, make sure Madison, he knows that Madison's thinking of him. So, thank you on that. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and as being the last regular meeting of the year, there is no introduction of ordinances. So we move on to consent agenda resolutions.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
I move consent agenda resolutions R282-2012 through R296-2012.
Second. Discussion, okay, roll call, vote.
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Uh.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business outside of having a great rest of the year. Approval of vouchers.
Okay. Public safety, we've had some amendments to our list here. Public safety is $31,286.56. Health and public assistance, $3,344.15. Public works and engineering, $188,457.58. Community affairs, $2,376.24. Finance and Borough Clerk, $2,898,295.71. And utilities, $261,853.04. Mended total is $3,312,598.84.
The total excluded...
It excludes three vouchers. One police department and two...
The one public safety plus the two utility?
Yes.
Thank you. I move the vouchers for approval.
Second. Discussion, roll call, vote.
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Uh.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
There is no new business outside of have a happy new year, and we'll see you here on New Year's Day.
Okay. Move to adjourn, happy holidays, everybody. Have a great one.
Thank you.
Yes.
Twelve, twelve, yep.
I can't hear my accent.
Throw me off the guy with the $3,000 plus.
I'm like, it's a Tuesday. I want to just end.
Okay.